And welcome, ladies and gentlemen. I call to order the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners meeting this December 17th, 2015, our last business meeting of the year. Mr. Crupp, our county administrator, will take our roll call.
Well, good evening, commissioners. We are joined here this evening from county council's office, Mr. Chris Story, and of course, as always, Mary Rathke, clerk to the board here on my left. I'll start with the roll. Commissioner Bernard.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Chair Ledlow.
Here. Y'all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, there's no comma after nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the first thing we'll do is announce the board will recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as a Housing Authority Board for the next item. I'll introduce the Housing Authority Commissioner Paul Reynolds, to my left, your right. So, Mr. Crupp.
So, I'm going to ask Mary Rathke to read the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
There you go, I should have done that.
Okay, there's one item on the Housing Authority Consent Agenda. It's in the matter of writing off uncollectible accounts for the second quarter of fiscal year 2016.
All right, commissioners have any questions about that? I'll ask for a motion.
I move we approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
Second. All right, motion by Commissioner Reynolds, seconded by Commissioner Bernard. Further discussion? I'll ask the clerk to call the poll.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard.
Aye.
Chair Ledlow.
Aye, passes 6-0. I'll announce the board will adjourn as a Housing Authority Board and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners. Commissioner Reynolds, thank you for attending tonight, we really appreciate that.
Thank you.
And now we have a presentation, Mr. Crupp.
Yes, Mr. Chair, once again, the Clackamas County Government Channel is being honored for a number of awards. We have a presentation this evening of the 2015 awards. I'm going to ask Mr. Garrett Teague, who's with our Cable Communications Division, to give you a presentation on this.
Thank you, Mr. Crupp. Thank you, Chair and Commissioners, for having me here tonight. I'm Garrett Teague with Public Government Affairs, and I coordinate video production for the Clackamas County Government Channel. Our channel has been on the air since 1996 and has consistently been honored for our programming. To date, we have received 259 awards, national and regional awards, competing against other governments, television stations, and production companies. I'm happy to say that this year we have 15 awards to show you, and I have a brief video highlighting our channel and those award-winning videos.
For nearly two decades, our award-winning team at the Clackamas County Government Channel has been telling the story of our communities and their government on television and online. We keep residents connected with the county's services and current events through public meetings, town halls, live events, and public service announcements. Our content gives a voice to the community by showcasing volunteers, nonprofits, and other organizations that are making a positive difference in Clackamas County. This outreach also promotes the programs and services available to those in need and the ways people can get more involved. In an area with abundant natural resources and wildlife, we provide insights into the issues the county faces and what's being done to manage and preserve this beautiful Home to the first city west of the Rockies, Clackamas County is rich in history. We share the stories that have shaped our landscapes, economy, and culture. Residents, new and old, can learn about our museums, historical events, and the people who established the county we know today. Through entertaining and educational programming, we celebrate the neighborhood businesses and fun outdoor activities that make Clackamas County a great place to live, work, and visit. At CCGC, we strive for excellence, keeping our residents informed and telling the stories that might otherwise not be told. And this year's 15 national awards are a reflection of the talent and dedication our team puts into every production. Let's take a look at this year's winners. April 2nd, Board of County Commissioners meeting, third place for public and community meetings. 2015 State of the County, third place for live community event coverage. The Community Impact Award Series, second place for Public Information Series. Community Impact Award, Terry Gant profile, second place for community awareness, and a bronze telly in the social issues category. The Oregon Military Museum, third place for lighting. The Canby Ferry, Across the River, Across the Years, honorable mention for documentary and event coverage. 1964 Christmas Flood, first place for documentary event coverage and second place for editing. An AVA Digital Award, honorable mention in the TV broadcast and cable government access category. Inside Clackamas County, Hops to Tap, AVA Digital Gold Award for Government Access and a bronze telly for use of graphics. CCGC at Work, honorable mention for municipal channel promotion, and a Best of the Northwest Award in the PSAs, promos, and station IDs category. The Clackamas County Government Channel also received special recognition for 2015 Programming Excellence with an honorable mention from the Natoa Awards. To see more of our award-winning programming, check out CCGC on cable TV. And subscribe to our YouTube channel.
I'd like to end by reminding residents that a livestream of our channel is available at clackamas.us/cable, and you can find all of our videos on YouTube. We also post to Facebook and Twitter. Follow @ClackamasCounty for those updates. And thank you for having me here today and for your continued support, and thanks to all the staff and producers for all their hard work for making these videos happen.
Congratulations. It's always pleasurable to watch them, the program there that is fascinating, especially about our culture and our history here in Clackamas County, let alone the human interest stories. Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Garrett. You've made a big difference in the promotion of the county as a whole, and Don has mentioned in a previous meeting, and I don't remember the statistics, huge amount on Facebook and Twitter and all the social media accounts, and it's a good way to get our message out. And as more we're out there, the more people will, I think, come to the, know where to go in the county, especially in a time of emergency or if they need special services or something. Thank you for your efforts on that.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith.
All right, thanks very much. And now, Mr. Crupp, it's time for citizen communication. Now, folks, I'm going to read your names, come up in twos, I'll put two on deck, and then try to watch that little clock in front of you for the three minutes and end as promptly as you can. First one is Kim Truhella and Steve Chinello, followed by Shirley Morgan and Mark Deppner. Either one of you can start.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Kim Truhella, and I'd like to address you on the land use ordinance that you're going to adopt this afternoon or this evening, particularly with the section having to do with the private access roads. Those of us who are located on those private access roads, for myself, I'll speak only, have been medically growing there for probably about 10 years now, and as I am a good neighbor since we've never gotten any kind of ordinance violations, or neighbors calling, or complaining, since we do have odor and all those kinds of controls, I feel that not only is it a violation of my privacy, I also feel it's, more importantly, a security risk, not only to those of us who live there and the workers, but also to the neighbors as well. And so I was asking that you might consider revising that, amending it, grandfathering those of us who've been doing this out of the goodness of our heart. We've served many patients over those years, many of which who've died because of their conditions, but proudly, I can say that we've helped them during their time, and one of those people is my husband, who's passed away for three years now. So, I'm just asking that you would consider the safety and security aspect of that. I'm not sure how many people are really affected by the private road access, and I'm not even really sure what the reasoning the commissioners have put that in. All of the other things, I really can't see a problem with, and I really appreciate all of your time on taking the time to do this. But, again, speaking for myself, want to be compliant, want to do the right thing, want to get licensed, but some of these things, especially this, will have me not able to qualify for getting a license through OLCC simply because I'm not going to put myself or my workers in jeopardy, including my children.
John.
Commissioner Smith.
You have a medical marijuana facility?
I do.
Okay. Chris, can you answer her questions, or Nate, one of you come up regarding what she thinks is going to happen? Because this commission mainly dealt with recreational marijuana, correct?
The ordinances that are proposed for this evening, for final adoption this evening, cover both recreational and medical marijuana uses.
And so, about her concerns about her private road access, can you talk to that?
Certainly, yeah. The specific provision really was put in place for, to address concerns, I guess, that this could be adding impacts, for one, to roads. There were some security concerns. And this provision really came directly from home occupations that already exist in the code, and so the thinking of staff at the time when it was originally proposed was we would take those similar provisions and graft those onto the new marijuana regulations that we were proposing, and so, because it was somewhat analogous to home occupations and because there had been concerns about current, I guess, bad actors, you can say, that were potentially abusing the accesses in the area, we thought that that would be a prudent regulation at the time.
Tell us about existing places before this ordinance goes into effect.
So, existing medical marijuana facilities do have the opportunity to be grandfathered in if they exist at their current intensity, I guess you can say, and of course, that's a question and that will be dealt with, I guess, on a case-by-case basis. We can't say that every single facility will be quote-unquote grandfathered in, but those that are validly existing have the possibility, at least, of being grandfathered in. Now, no recreational uses are legally existing at this time, and so all recreational uses, if this ordinance is adopted after January 4th, would need to come in for permit approval as well as OLCC approval at the state, and the driveway regulations, as well as the rest of ZDO 254 would apply at that time.
So, going back to the question of access, and if this lady is current and legal and registered and everything she has to be, even though she has a shared access, tell me about that.
Assuming everything is legal, what would happen is that the planning staff could take a look at that, is a non-conforming use, continuation of a non-conforming use, and if everything continues to exist at the same intensity, using the same use, there'd be the possibility that you could continue without having to comply with the regulations of ZDO 254. Now, I heard that there was the possibility of maybe converting over to recreational, or at least that's what I thought may have been implied by referencing OLCC standards in there. If that's the case, then that would probably be a different analysis undertaken by the planning staff, but if it continued exactly as it was and all the correct approvals were in place, there would be at least the possibility that that operation would be grandfathered in without having to comply with the driveway access.
I think most people know it's OLCC for recreational.
Correct.
And the Oregon Health Authority for medical.
Correct.
Commissioner Savis.
I'd like to interject one point. There is an option for, through the OLCC, to do what they call a medical opt-in. So, instead of being recreational and for the record, I voted no on recreational marijuana, just for the record, because I knew that this was going to sort of mess it up for those medical patients. That would also be a license through the OLCC, and it would also include the same tracking as the recreational side, and so I would think that the county would want to know.
I got to get back to this. I understand. It is a lot of our druthers that they would combine the two of, and without having two authorities over different uses or supposed uses of marijuana, just get this thing over. I think future legislators will approach that. Commissioner Savis.
I was just curious, I mean, I don't think that we've done anything in the language that would put any more risk, you mentioned security and safety, so is there something that you see that would be less secure and less safe?
Yes, absolutely. So, for the many years that we've run a legitimate medical marijuana facility, we've never even talked to most of our friends and family.
You're on TV now.
And that's exactly why I'm here, representing those people who don't want to show up, but I have full intention of going forward, not only with my medical grow, but becoming more active as far as politically. I've also spoke with Representative Ken Helm last week, but the point is this, if I have to go ask five or six different neighbors whether it's okay for me to run my business or my medical marijuana grow and get their permission unanimously in order to use the road that I reside on, I find that fundamentally a problem, since I've never really discussed it even.
You've made that point. Let me, let's get back to the point at hand, is that you have some avenues to explore, I hope you do that, but the point of the matter is, is, and I know this right now, that if you had an in-home business in this county, in unincorporated Clackamas County, then you would have to have permission from those neighbors that you're on in order to have that in-home business. Now, since that probably gets similar traffic in in-home business with medical marijuana, because you've got patients I know you deliver to, but they come to you, then the planning commission.
That's the point, nobody's ever been on that death farm.
The planning commission and our staff felt that was a reasonable restriction, and there's some situations out there where it probably should be that situation. So, we'll consider that as we go forward here and talk about it, but thank you. Yes, sir.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Steve Chinello. I reside in Beaver Creek. Good evening, Clackamas County Board of Commissioners. I applied you, as well as the Land Use Commission and all the others that have worked on the marijuana issues. It has not been easy, so thank you. With this being said, all the Clackamas County work will go in vain if there's not sufficient enforcement and accountability processes in place. We, the citizens and registers voters, again, ask that Clackamas County and the State of Oregon take the multiple issues created by marijuana grows, including the herbaceous farm situation, seriously, and do their part to protect its law-abiding citizens by holding facilities like herbaceous farms accountable for their actions instead of rewarding them. Also, please let me stress that the Highland Butte Neighborhood Watch citizens are watching the activities of herbaceous farms very closely, as well as the steps and the processes that are being used by Clackamas County and the State of Oregon. Efficient code and law enforcement is not an option, but rather a requirement of the responsibilities of our elected officials through the taxes that we make available. We do recognize that, as citizens, we too have civil rights and know that public safety and quality of life for our families are part of those rights, and we will fight for this and not be discriminated against. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next are Shirley Morgan and Mark Deppner. After that, I have Kevin Harrison and Fred, oh boy, Fred Youngluth, best I can do. Either one of you, please.
Well, good evening, commissioners. My name is Shirley Morgan from Welch's, and you've heard plenty from me over the last nine months, but tonight, I want to come as a citizen. And I want to come as a citizen of 44 years in the Mount Hood community, and I come with the only topic that I'm greatly concerned about at the moment on the topic of marijuana. I sprung to advocacy for public safety, quality of life, and property values in 1995 because my home was burglared, and I lived down the street from a drug house for 27 years. In 1998, I found 10 cats and two dogs starving to death on this property and took them all in. Then this property decided to cook and traffic methamphetamine along with marijuana. I called Clackamas County Sheriff's Office to ask for help, only to be told that their special investigation team of four were working other cases in the county. So I got in the bushes with my binoculars and began taking license plates myself to be a good partner with law enforcement. None of our commissioners live in the Mount Hood area, where we only have one law enforcement officer, and it shocks me to believe that you would open the door to marijuana sales and wholesale distribution into an area with limited law enforcement, knowing that they are federally illegal and that they operate by cash only. I was most bothered over these last nine months and public testimonies by three key issues, that I really have to leave my heart behind on this. When Chair Ledlow scurried a vote on marijuana land use to direct to the planning commission prior to having public discussion. Number two, when Commissioner Bernard pandered to the Mount Hood Village Group, who brought a handful of people to the last village meeting to take a vote on whether they wanted pot on the mountain, especially knowing that the commissioners have received over 100 letters and have had many residents who have faithfully attended these hearings and testified for the last nine months. Knowing that this would take precedent over public safety in my community is bothersome to me. Number three, I wish that I could have purchased my home on the mountain before I knew how much it was going, how I was going to pay for it, which is what this county has done by not identifying clearly the potential enforcement needs, income, and costs that will be required to protect the citizens in rural communities such as mine. Mitigational compromise ignores long-term impacts, and political pandering to find a balance of what's reasonable will result in many long-term consequences for Clackamas County. With that, I want to wish you all a Merry Christmas, and I want to thank you for listening to me for the last nine months. You all know I'm not a person who goes away, so thank you.
Okay, yes, sir.
My name is Mark Deppner. I'm a mechanic in a Clackamas County truck shop. I'd like to thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Tonight, I wanted to talk to you about our contract, our, the mechanics have been asking for a 5% pay raise, and to my knowledge, I've been with the county 17 years, and to my knowledge, our tables haven't been adjusted to market value in the time I've been here, save our cost of living raises, that's what we've gotten. I want to tell you that we've had, in, we've had three recruitments, two of those recruitments left for higher-paying jobs, and one of them was unqualified and didn't make it through probation. The wages that we're offering are not bringing in the qualified mechanics. Every one of our mechanics that are currently in our shop now either have two- or four-year degrees in diesel technology. We have, well, I personally have a $10,000 toolbox with about $20,000 worth of tools in it that I've personally paid for over my career, and everyone else in my shop is the same way. We have these expenses, and we have put a lot into becoming mechanics, is what I'm trying to get at. All we're asking for is just middle ground on the, on the market for what we, for what we get. I just did a quick search on Monster today. There are 41 diesel mechanic positions open in the Portland metro area in the middle of December, so there's, there's not enough mechanics to fill all the vacancies, and we're not paying enough to draw in the good ones. These guys back here in the orange, I serve every one of those guys with our truck shop, and they're very important to me. They have wives, kids, mortgages. I want their equipment safe, and I want people who know what they're doing, working on their equipment, and I don't understand why there's such a problem for a 5% raise for these guys to bring in some good talent. You know, we, these guys deserve good talent. They deserve their equipment to be taken care of properly. So, I appreciate it, and thank you for allowing me to speak to you tonight.
Thank you. For the general public, this, we're in labor negotiations, and as such, as commissioners, it's executive session material. We can't discuss anything about what's going on. They can, the union and all these fine folk here can definitely talk about whatever they wish, we are precluded from doing that. So, the next two are Kevin Harrison, if it's close, come on up, and Fred, Y-U-N-G-H-L-U-T-H.
Chair Ledlow and commissioners, good evening. My name's Kevin Hutcherson. I've been with the county since 2009. I'm the vice president of ASME Local 350-0. Currently, I'm working as a coordinator to help restore the Waymaster program. I take great deal of pride in my work. We are here today because it is our 169th day working without a collective bargaining agreement. I'm here to ask that the county change their position in collective bargaining. The bottom line, our mechanics, by all measurements, deserve a wage increase. We are a unit of nearly 200 workers, yet at the end of this process, we are asking that only one classification receive a market adjustment. We've been advocating for this increase for nearly two years. The county uses the same comparators for almost all job classifications. This process has a weakness. For positions like mechanics that are highly skilled and have niche skills, those comparators don't include the other local public employers whose wages far exceed our own. Take, for example, Toowalton Valley Fire District. Their mechanics work on large equipment like our own truck shop mechanics, yet are compensated much better. Despite this weakness in the analysis of mechanics' wages, the county's customary comparators still show that our mechanics are underpaid. To say that again, despite the fact that we see the current analysis as insufficient, the county's own process shows that our mechanics are more than 1 range or 5% below market. Besides that analysis, the quality of our mechanic applicants has taken a nosedive. In fact, we had to reopen our last recruitment. Even then, the successful candidate did not make it through their probationary period because they couldn't perform at a satisfactory level. Eventually, if this wage disparity remains, it will cause a safety issue. As for our seniority clause, the county is attempting to strip our internal promoted process. This union is committed to working together to help diversify our membership, but I will tell you what isn't a successful strategy for helping us get the workforce on board with diversifying. Unilaterally, stripping our union rights under the guise of diversity. It's shameful, and our members are understandably angry about it. If the county really wanted to be partners in improving diversity, it would remove the current proposal and come to the table with an open mind. You would find a much more receptive union membership under those circumstances, and you wouldn't destroy any goodwill or relationship that currently exists with our membership. Thank you for taking the time to air us out today.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
So, just for the record, the last name is Youngluth, and it's Y-U-N-G-B-L-U-T-H, and I'm, I reside in Happy Valley. Chair Ledlow and commissioners, I want to Chair Ledlow and Commissioners, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Fred Youngluth, I'm the President of ASME Local Three Fifty. ASME Local Three Fifty represents over six hundred and sixty members with representation in Clackamas County Nine One One, the Clackamas Department of Transportation Development, Water Environment Services, and other locals throughout the county. I'm a Nine One One dispatcher and I've been serving the community since two thousand five. I've been very involved in the union since I was hired because I have seen the positive changes it brings to the workplace and in turn to the services provided to our citizens. I am here because I want to comment on a marked change in labor relations this bargaining cycle. Never before have we had to wait four months for a counterproposal from the county, as was the case with DTD and Wes. Never before has our union, while engaged in good-faith bargaining to settle a contract, been threatened with health insurance increases as a tool of leverage after the county has used stall tactics. Never before have we reached an agreement with the county only to have management say that they need, need us to give up more. Never before have we acquiesced to such a demand only to have the county come back to the table to tell us there will not be a deal. When I look around the bargaining table representing DTD, Wes, and CCOM, I see mostly familiar faces. People who I know, who have been involved in bargaining in the past are peripherally involved in other union activities. The only new dynamic seems to be the DES representation who are interfacing with our bargaining teams. I believe this commission wants this labor relation to be marked by cooperation and compromises in the best interest of our citizens. It is that, if that is the case, we need to, need your leadership in expressing that to DES. Otherwise, my personal fear is that our relationship is going to degrade into one of marked by labor strife. This union is committed to preventing that from happening. But that the hires that the county has made within DES do not demonstrate, based on their past reputation or their current postures, at our bargaining tables, the same collaborative effort and relationship we've enjoyed in the past. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, gentlemen. So it is, I think it's Linda Perez-Priess and Kay Pollak.
Good evening Commissioners, thank you for-
Can you pull that closer to you because that's not even-
Sorry, good evening.
Thank you.
Chair Ledlow and Commissioners, I'm Kay Pollak. I've been an employee of Clackamas County for twenty-six years. I'm disturbed by the approach that is being taken to bargaining ASME's overdue contract. Several years ago, through bargaining, employees and management reached agreement for sharing increased health insurance costs. There has also been a practical process used every contract, every year since then, for the Benefits Review Committee, a committee that includes employees and management, to consider modifications to health plans so that cost increases can be kept to a minimum. That process has been very successful. Even though it has resulted in reduced benefits and increased costs, it has held the county's insurance premiums down. That process has been used again this year and verbal agreements have been reached on policy amendments and cost sharing. Those agreements will be formalized when the contract is eventually signed. But today, employees are being threatened that we will be responsible for all, all increased health insurance costs in two thousand sixteen until the contract is signed, as if the agreements of the Benefits Review Committee had not been reached. This threat is apparently being used to exact other concessions from employees. This feels unnecessarily adversarial. It erodes trust and it is demoralizing. It is an act of intimidation and should not be a part of good-faith bargaining. I urge the Commissioners to direct management negotiators to eliminate this tactic from the process and to promptly expedite good-faith bargaining in order to reach a contract agreement. These delays are costing unnecessary time and money.
Thank you.
Good evening Commissioners, my name is Linda Price and I work in the Planning Division of DTD. I also started to work here in nineteen seventy-eight, so I have been here many years and have gone through a variety of bargaining activities. Recently, I, in my department, have been given the mission to place the spirit posters that the Commissioners and the county want to place in public view and in our department, specializing in talking about our core values that we value here in the county. And these posters proclaim that Clackamas County has core values and that it strives for integrity in all our actions and will demonstrate fairness in interactions with others. It also goes on to state that Clackamas County strives for respect and that we will communicate in a positive and courteous manner. And that the posters state that Clackamas County strives to act in ways to create trust. In all of our actions, we remain approachable and objective. We declare our intentions and we address issues honestly and directly. The, the communications with the bargaining groups and with the members of ACTME, with our union, have not followed these core principles. And I would urge that the Commissioners direct the bargaining efforts and follow the core values that they so grandly want us to profess to the rest of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Kimberly Bethan and Thelma Hagan-Miller. Followed by Steve Bates-Lesspool.
Chair Ledlow and Commissioners, my name is Kimberly Bintin. I've been employed with the county since two thousand and three. I am also the President of ASME Local Three Fifty dash zero. Our union is made up of the people who make this county work. We are the technicians who maintain our wedges and roads. The engineers who hold contractors accountable to the public for the work they perform. We are the men and women who pull long shifts to plow the roads and keep the county running through inclement weather. We are the writers of zoning ordinances for you to adopt. We ensure the county's ordinances are adhered to. We review building plans and conduct inspections to ensure the construction of the buildings in our county are safe. We are the members of Clackamas County Local Three Fifty dash zero, made up of the employees of the Department of Transportation and Development. We are here today because it is our one-hundred-and-sixty-ninth day working without a collective bargaining agreement and we are running out of patience. Our union delivered all of our proposals to the county at the beginning of June this year. That was nearly seven months ago. We didn't receive a counterproposal regarding economic proposals until mid-October, four months later. Now we find ourselves under the gun and pressured to finish negotiations lest our members pick up health insurance increases January first, two thousand sixteen. Only two issues remain for negotiation, wages and the seniority clause in our collective bargaining agreement. Our wage request is simple. Our mechanics, based on the methodology the county uses to measure wages, are more than five percent behind the market. We would like the county to adjust those wages. The county has offered to perform a wage study, but we duplicated the data that they would collect and saved DES the time. There is no need for a study because the data is definitive. As for our seniority clause, the county is attempting to strip our internal motivator process. DES has forwarded two rationales for their proposal. First, they argue that to comply with Veterans' Preference Laws, the process must include external candidates. I think it is worth noting that our bargaining team, unlike the county's, actually includes veterans. Secondly, the union has made suggestions that would help the county apply the current process and to be compliant with the law. The county simply doesn't want to wait an additional week to advertise the jobs externally. Instead, they would like to use Veterans' Preference as an excuse to dismantle our current process and to insert external candidates into internal recruitments. The second rationale DES forwards is that our internal process is a barrier to diversifying our workforce. Again, we believe this is a fallacious argument. The union proposed a bundle of ideas that are being promoted by Casa Picchu, the Urban League, Apano, and other groups who are advocates for minorities, women, and people with disabilities. Noticeably absent from those ideas are attacks on union rights such as seniority. Our community partners do not believe that stripping internal job bidding actually increases diversity or improves diversity. In fact, they believe, like we do, that adding subjectivity to our hiring process actually creates more opportunities for discrimination. Attacking contract rights under the guise of diversity is out of an antiquated human resources playbook. We see it as an attack and a sign that the county does not want to be partners in a mutually beneficial approach to diversifying our workforce. We are demanding that the county remove this proposal so the contract can be settled. I worry that our members will not ratify a contract that includes the county's current proposal. This is not worth a labor stoppage, nor is it worth the destruction of the core values that we all want to have as a chronic, organic, and universal core values with our county. Thank you.
Thank you. Thelma.
Good evening Chair Ledlow and Commissioners. My name is Thelma Hagan-Miller and I am still a resident of the unincorporated area of Clackamas County known as Oak Grove. I am speaking to you this evening about citizen involvement and oversight, or lack thereof. I am referring specifically to the Regional Wastewater Committee, RWC, and the related meetings that have taken place over the last year. I attended both the RWC meeting on Thursday, December tenth, and your BCC Policy Report Discussion held Tuesday, December fifteenth. Plus, I listened to the audio of the previous RWC meeting. What I find totally missing from any of these discussions is moving forward with either the digester component or this district's governance structure is the discussion of a citizen ratepayer advisory committee. Let me share reasons why I think this should be a key component in these discussions. A citizen ratepayer advisory is not concerned with the right decision so she can, she or he can be re-elected. A citizen ratepayer advisor is not an employee of the county or the districts, so they are not concerned about where their next paycheck comes from. A citizen ratepayer advisor brings lots of questions to the table to help bring simple solutions to complicated matters. A citizen ratepayer advisor is an unbiased advocate of a project based solely on the merits of the project. A citizen ratepayer advisor knows they are not decision-makers in the matters that come before them. A true citizen ratepayer advisor is treated as if he has value instead of being limited to three minutes of testimony before another group. A citizen ratepayer advisor has no dog in this fight except to know that he is footing the bill for a service that he uses when he takes a shower, washes his dishes, or pushes the handle on his toilet. I do hope you will take my above comments under advisement and consider how a citizen ratepayer advisories, advisors committee would be an all-around advantage in these future discussions related to both county sewer expansion and government issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bernard.
Excuse me, my mic's not on. I'm having a little trouble speaking, but Milwaukee had a utility commission, which I thought was very valuable. And, you know, they got all the information and they brought to the city council any increases in utilities and I thought it worked very well. And I'm a total supporter of some makeup of a board. And as far as I'm concerned, it'd be just fine if it was totally citizen-driven. They could advise one other group if they wanted to, but I think they're just a valuable resource. And never once did we have an argument with that group or neither, none of them ever ran for office, so. And many were on for decades. They, you know, they, they, some of this work takes a lot of time to learn about. And it's important that people, you know, one elected person goes away, two years later, all that information goes away. So a longer-term member of the utility commission could be very helpful.
Commissioner Savis.
I appreciate Commissioner Bernard sharing that and I hope maybe, I think the next discussion on this is-
January fifth.
January fifth, so that'll be our next work session on this. And hopefully, we can carry that spirit into the discussion on Tuesday.
The Wastewater Advisory Board has made recommendations in regards to the Tri-City Advisory Board. And I think most people should know that the Tri-City Advisory Board is owned by the patrons, each and every paying person. That's who it's owned by, it's not owned by the city, any city. It is owned by the ratepayers individually and then aggregately. And we were elected in nineteen eighty to be the jurisdiction over that district and we take that very seriously. There's been a lot of suggestions, we're going slow, trying to satisfy a varied amount of people, but I think we're doing good. Thank you for your suggestions.
All right, Steve Bates-Lesspool.
I yield to my right.
He's going to yield. Lesspool, I live in Gladstone. Evening meetings are great. It's good to see an opportunity, even when it's rainy and nasty out, that folks have an, the, the, one time a month. And I keep talking about evening meetings because it only took a handful of people and a little help from Paul Savis to make that happen a few years ago. And to those of you that have to work late, I probably should have apologized back then. I was pleased, as, as my friends in Jennings Lodge are, that the, the plan for developing and, and what I would say, pretty much wiping out that evangelical property. I was pleased about the decision on that. I don't know if it'll be appealed, but it just, it just keeps going back to the same theme and that is, what level of density is reasonable? Johnson Creek is flooding like mad after Metro spent a fortune, a fortune. And what'd they spend the money on? Making sure it wouldn't flood. But we're wiping out neighborhoods, we're wiping out trees. And we're dealing with an entity that recently refused to expand the growth boundary. They are mandating things that we can't afford. And it seems like at the end of every year, we see their, their latest. We remember the end of two thousand fourteen, Climate Smart, the unfunded mandate. And then we remember in the spring, suddenly we had, oh, well, we'll do clean fuels, that's how we'll pay for that. And here we are, the, the end of this year, we're still unresolved on, on our future land use planning. Millions have been wasted, just untold millions. And there's no accountability at Metro. In fact, we've got one Commissioner that loves to defend them, thinks they're wonderful. Well, they are wonderful at some things, but when it comes to managing regional planning, when it comes to the urban growth boundary, they failed in Beaver Creek in nineteen ninety-eight. Two thousand two led to the Damascus disaster. They failed over and over and over. We're asking them to do the impossible. And of course, they have all to say so, they have the authority. So unless we change what's going on at Metro, we're going to continue to be in the same quagmire. So hopefully, that's something that we can do something about in the future and I'll have another subject. This gentleman probably is going to talk about Metro in fact. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bates.
Season greetings, Chair Ledlow and Commissioners. I'm Steve Bates, a thirty-eight-year resident of Boring here in Clackamas County. Over fifty-five years ago, President John F. Kennedy said that you can't negotiate with people who say what is mine is mine and what is yours is negotiable. Yesterday, Metro and President Tom Hughes demonstrated the wisdom of President Kennedy. During a facilitated meeting concerning urban reserves, President Hughes said four times, "I like our chances in court." Three times, he said, "The reserve maps are not on the table." Like Oswego Councilor Jeff Goodman said it best, Lake Oswego Councilor Jeff Goodman said it best, "If the maps are not on the table, then we don't have a whole lot to discuss." Rather than assist in solving problems for the region, Metro has chosen to be a problem in and of itself. It is perfectly clear, Clackamas County is not the regional pariah that some people in this room claimed two months ago. The pariah is Metro itself. I commend Lake Oswego Mayor Studebaker, as he was the only one in the room yesterday that said, "No, that's not right." I commend Towleton Mayor Ogden for confronting Metro directly and asking what they are doing to fix the congestion and the broken transportation system between Towleton and Oregon City. I commend West Lynn Mayor Axelrod for stating the Stafford Compromise should be on the table. I commend Commissioner Smith for agreeing with the mayor. Commissioners, this body should be embracing the Stafford Compromise. This Board of Commissioners should be advocating for the Stafford Compromise. Why? Because it makes sense. But most importantly, it came from the people. The community, the people within the hamlet of Stafford exercised democratic principles to agree on a vision for their community. Commissioners, Stafford and Boring have a lot in common. We both have visions for our community that are outside the venue or the determination of Metro. With that said, I urge this commission to stand for the people of Clackamas County, and I've said it before and I'll say it again, our elected officials should be extolling the virtues of Clackamas County and its people, not embracing the principles of Metro. Commissioners, I urge you to stand with your constituents and not with Metro. And with that said, may you all have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Commissioner Schrader.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a few technical comments here with this. I was here when the hamlet was started. It was one of our initiatives, and I remember, because they are an unincorporated area in the county, we wanted to give our community planning organizations an opportunity to really be what they could be, because they kind of automatically seem to move into governance. And governance, because we're Americans and Oregonians, and it seems to be in our DNA. So one of the reasons the hamlet, I believe, was formed was because of the fact of what was going to happen in that area of the Stafford Triangle. And they have done a really good job in terms of pulling together as a group to actually come up with their own concept plan with what they would like to see in that area in terms of where urbanization would take place, where some density might work and won't work in other places, what the open space is going to be, how they can actually kind of be a rural-urban interface in a way that maintains the character of that area. So they've done an excellent job with that. Here's the issue, though, that needs to happen. One of the reasons we pulled the cities together was so we could see, is there a city that wants to have that particular area and then work with the community there to realize their vision? Usually, we don't want to, at least what I've always said, we don't want to necessarily urbanize unincorporated areas. One of the issues we'd be dealing with, for example, is septic systems all over that area, which I think could be detrimental long-term to the environmental health of the area. It's better if there's sewer systems in place to, to really treat the waste the way it should be treated. And quite frankly, this is a problem throughout the county, with Boring being a really, actually bad area, because septic systems leak, and a lot of times, people don't know they're leaking until it's too late and something bubbles up, and it becomes a public health hazard. So I made a comment, as did Mrs., as did Commissioner Smith, that we would really prefer to have people honor the work that the Stafford folks have done. They have a good vision, it's a doable vision, and it would probably take, if a city wanted to do that, would probably take some changes to their comprehensive plans and their codes. And it has been done in other places, and I'd like, I personally would like to see something like that work in that particular area and that triangle.
Commissioner Smith.
Yeah, I stood beside the Stafford hamlet, because those are the people who will be the most affected by this. You know, this land use situation we have over in Stafford, it's not about really maps or boundary lines, it's about people and the needs of society that we're trying to deal with. We walked into the room, sat down, and one of the first things that Metro President Hughes says, when the cities offered up something, "Well, we'll win in court, it doesn't matter." And then he said something later that I thought was so disturbing. He says, "Well, I can do whatever I want, because I'm not running for office anymore, and oh, by the way, I have bulletproof glass in my car windows." You know, is that really how you want to deal? Is that want to be your legacy, that I'm gonna be a bully and slap the cities and the county around because I can? Or do we want to get together and try to solve a rare, very real problem that society in this county is demanding us to do? So we broke for a little bit, and many suggestions came up, and the cities tried hard. But what the cities are telling everybody is, we don't want this area developed until we have a transportation system in mind, in what the solution is that gonna be, and a sewer and wastewater and water treatment plant in mind either. And you know, I don't blame them, because how many developments have you seen that have spread out and the facilities aren't there yet? While I'm an advocate of growth control, I think we can answer those questions. I think the cities and the county together can use regional planning to move forward on this. I don't think we're that far behind. And then the last things, we broke, we came back to the table, the cities had one last situ, you know, they offered one slash situation, and Mr. Hughes says, "Well, I'm not interested in unicorns and pixie dust." Well, it's very hard to negotiate with somebody when he doesn't respect your premise from the beginning, because you are concerned, as Martha and I were, about the people in the room who did not get a chance to speak. And, you know, I could talk on this topic all night long, but I'm not going to. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Bernard.
So, the crazy thing about all this is that neither Metro or Clackamas County is gonna develop Stafford, neither one. And unless the cities decide to do something, nothing's gonna happen. Metro can't demand density if there's nobody willing to do it. The cities can't not demand density unless they're willing to do it. So it seems like the winners are the Stafford people, 'cause nothing's gonna happen. So it'll remain where it is. It might be brought, it might be, in the remand, it may be resolved, but still, nothing's happening until a city wants it. I think a most valuable tool is an agreement called an UGMA. It's a management agreement between cities. It's very valuable. Happy Valley, City of Milwaukee had one that draws the lines, and then the cities could say, "Well, we're not gonna do anything," or "We're gonna do something." But it seems to me like they're about five to 10 years ahead of themselves, since not only has the remand not been resolved, but a city hasn't said they want it, 'cause we're not gonna do it, and Metro's not gonna do it. So I don't know what we're worried about right now.
Commissioner Savis.
Well, I can't pass up this opportunity. Sitting in the audience yesterday and listening to the topic and the conversation, it struck me that a lot of the concerns, I think Mayor Ogden of Towleton probably brought it to the forefront more than anyone did, that, about the transportation problems in this county, and pointed out 205 and others. And I don't think that there's a lot of confidence, no matter what county you're in or what position you hold, there's not a lot of confidence that there's a commitment from the region to invest in our transportation problems. And when, I think Mayor Ogden said, "Imagine, take the lowest density numbers and imagine putting 15,000 people in the community of Stafford, the size of Willsaville approximately, and imagine what that'd do to traffic." And it's a really good point, a really good point. Imagine that much more traffic, and it's in a, in a situation where we're losing ground on traffic congestion, we're losing ground on the investment in, in that. So how are they gonna, how would anyone, the mayor of, the mayor or any elected official in the region, have confidence that, as a region, we're willing to fix that problem? Because it's been invested in this, into other solutions that haven't really amounted to any relief in congestion, it's gotten worse. So I think the recipe for the future is, maybe as a commitment from this region, I shared that with President Hughes and others and the mayors, that we need to show a commitment or hear a commitment from the region that we are gonna fix these problems, and then perhaps, perhaps at that point, they can erase the perception that we're not going to invest in surface transportation. But that was, that was written in the newspapers, that was, that came from elected officials in this region that said, "We're not, we're gonna put any more money in, in our freeways and highways." And, and that perception is still out there, and I think it frightens people out there to think that 15,000 minimum in that area, developed by Metro standards, is just unacceptable. And, and I, I have to agree. They can't handle congestion that's there today, how would you handle 15,000 more people? I can't fathom that.
Commissioner Schrader.
Well, I just wanted to say, the whole point of the meeting was to get an UGMA, Urban Growth Management Agreement, between the cities themselves, with Metro on board with it. And Metro was not willing to work as well with the cities as I would have liked to have seen. It was just specific language, people couldn't, couldn't get there, and it was a very disappointing meeting, because I thought we were very close for a while. And what our partners did, what our city partners did, was point out exactly what Commissioner Savis mentioned, was that there's, there are significant infrastructure challenges that have to be addressed if you're going to have any kind of change there. And I'm not even talking about the kinds of densities Metro is talking about, because I think that that's another nightmare. I don't think it's doable, quite frankly. So it was, it was a disappointment. There was a while there where I thought we actually got pretty close to an agreement, and if we could have just crossed that finish line, but couldn't, couldn't, you were there, Commissioner, with me, and you saw that we were almost there, and we couldn't, we couldn't get people at the end to agree with a simple language change, and that's what, but that's where we stand right now, so.
Let's not forget how this all got here. The, this urban rural map plan, locking properties up for 50 years, was sent forward for, for approval, and the cities of West Lynn and Towleton sued. And through the Court of Appeals and then through LCDC, a remand came. And the remand said, "Fix these Stafford problems." We asked for, because it was an idea of our Strategic Policy Administrator, Dan Chandler, to have a facilitated discussion about this and invite the three cities to the table as well as Metro. Metro says, "Well, we don't need that, we can have our own meeting." And they did. They had their own meeting without Clackamas County, after Clackamas County, and those three cities had put into writing, "Please don't do this." Metro did it anyway. They said, "Everything's fine." They've run over the cities. The fact of the matter is, is I think the Stafford hamlet is a great compromise, but we were, we always thought that we should have this discussion with the three cities about that before we make any decision. So in regards to your advice, in regards to the hamlet and their compromise, that will be taken into consideration very soon, I think, and we'll come forth with our recommendations. Considering that these cities can also continue to sue this place, this entire area of Stafford may be in limbo for many, many years to come. And a lot of it has to do with Metro, because they say, "No, no, 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 no." That map, the urban rural map, is six years old. Anything else in this region that's six years old, Metro would say, "Well, that needs replanned." But not this precious map. We can't touch this map, no changes, 'cause they're afraid that if they open up for change one time, the floodgates will be open. So thank you for your, your advice, Mr. Bates. Look what you've done to this commission, right? And the last card I have today is Kay Mordock. Thanks for coming, yeah, leave through the back, please, I appreciate that. Thanks for coming. Kay, you're batting cleanup here today.
That's okay, it's better than not batting at all.
That's for sure.
Good evening, County Chair and Commissioners. The subject I'd like to discuss is the Regional Wastewater Treatment Capacity Advisory Committee. Johnson City requests to be added as a voting member of this advisory committee. With the inclusion of Johnson City to the advisory committee, this will give a well-rounded field that all cities would be represented in the service district. As of now, we are not represented on that board. As a ratepayer first and an elected official second, I believe the upcoming months for this advisory committee will require the needed regional collaboration that I feel is missing within this committee. I also believe a fresh point of view will bring calm and cooperation to this committee. Many families in Johnson City are on fixed incomes. They count their pennies each month, as many folks do in Clackamas County. Due to the upcoming increase to the ratepayers, many folks will want to be a part of the discussion, and I strongly encourage the open communication by all parties. As part of Clackamas County and a spokesperson for Johnson City citizens, it is imperative that the information given to the citizens is clear and concise. On behalf of myself and the families of Johnson City, I am prepared to commit the necessary time and energy to be a meaningful member of this team. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Savis.
Chair, I'd just like to give Mayor Kay Mordock an official welcome and, and I just wanted to just recognize her, that she is the mayor of Johnson City, and thank you for coming, and thank you for putting a face to Johnson City.
Thank you.
And I appreciate your comments, they're spot on. I have found and met with Mayor Mordock and found her to be, her common sense to be very refreshing, so I think you'd be a welcome addition on that committee, but that's a decision for this board.
Okay.
We will take our very careful and sweet time about changing the makeup of any of these committees, because there's great sensitivity out there about this right now, and we've stumbled a few times, possibly, and the accusatory figures have been pointed. So we're gonna take our time and, and really concentrate on the number one thing we should, and that's capacity and serving our clients, our customers, our patrons. Thank you very much, Kay.
Mr. Crepp, we have ordinances.
Yes, we do. We have the adoption of a previously approved zoning and development ordinance, a set of amendments, ZDO 254, marijuana land use regulations. Mr. Nate Boderman from the County Council's office will give you a report. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners, Assistant County Council Nate Boderman. I have for you this evening the materials related to the final adoption of ZDO 254, which, as you know, is the amendments which implement the county's marijuana land use regulations. This is really a culmination of efforts that began last July and was really prompted by Measure 91 and House Bill 3400, which, again, as you know, are the recreational marijuana laws at the state level. In addition to the public outreach and involvement that is described in the staff report, public hearings on ZDO 254 were held before the Planning Commission on October 26th, November 2nd, and November 8th, 2015, and before the Board of County Commissioners on November 23rd and December 2nd, 2015. At the close of the December 2nd hearing, the board voted four to one to approve ZDO 254 as recommended by staff, along with various amendments that are specifically detailed in your staff report materials. Staff has prepared the order materials in front of you today, consistent with the direction that you provided at that December 2nd hearing. And in addition to the substantive changes I've described in the staff report materials for you, I wanted to note that staff has made additional conforming changes for final quality control, standardizing citations, formatting at consistency purposes, like we usually do with these large amendment packages. I would also like to note for the record that five of the conforming changes that staff has made were done in the last week, since receiving some additional feedback from our planning staff, and since these changes were not reflected in the materials that were posted online, I did want to take just a moment to specifically note those here for the record. So in Exhibit A, we propose to amend Section 841 as follows, to amend 84102 and delete Section 84103 Sub L Sub 3, to remove provisions that imply that marijuana processing in the RRFF 5 and FF10 districts is allowed. As you'll recall, the board previously voted to prohibit processing in these zones. Also to remove a reference to the Timber District from Section 84103 Sub C, because marijuana processing is prohibited in that zone at both the state law level and according to the board's previous vote of ZDO 254. To add a reference to the Comprehensive Plan Map 5-4B, which is Road Functional Classification Rural Map, and that's found in subsection 84104 Sub G Sub 1 Sub D, and amend 84105 Sub A Sub 1 to replace references to conditional use with references to marijuana production or marijuana processing for consistency with other similar ZDO sections. There's also one conforming amendment in Exhibit B. In addition to all the same amendments that I just mentioned in Exhibit A, Exhibit B relates to the Medical Marijuana Implementing Ordinance. There's also proposed to delete subsection 84103 Sub L Sub 5, because it refers to marijuana processing, again, in the RRFF 5 and FF10 districts. And once again, the board previously voted to prohibit processing in these zones. So again, just to get on the... So again, just to get on the record that these conforming amendments were made and to note those for, uh, for your benefit there. Happy to answer any questions that you have. The ordinance before you makes all the changes that I just described that are set forth in the staff report and which you have previously approved. So those are the few comments that I did want to make on the ordinance, just as an aside. And before you move to any further discussions on this, I did want to say, speaking on behalf of staff, um, that it has been satisfying to be part of this process. It, it really has. And it'd be thoughtless on the part of staff not to direct some of the kind words that have been directed our way with the handling of the process to others that, that really had a vital part in making this happen, um, specifically the administrative staff for their efforts in coordinating all the meetings and truly bending over backwards, uh, to make sure that all the materials were provided, uh, to all the people that needed them, uh, to those interested parties, really, that took the time out of their busy schedules to show up and, and educate staff and educate the elected officials on this emerging topic. That, between the task force and just people that, that showed up, whether it be the Planning Commission or the Board of County Commissioners hearing, that was tremendously helpful and staff does appreciate that. The Planning Commission that did much of the heavy lifting in terms of, of receiving testimony and formulating a clear recommendation for the board, uh, and of course, the board for, uh, asking the right questions at the right time, taking the time to educate yourself and, and making an informed decision. And so, as happens with these things, uh, not everybody walks away getting what they want, and that's just unavoidable. But I do think this experience reaffirms that when the process is done correctly, it works and it results in a thoughtful decision. So again, thank you to everybody that did take place or took, uh, part in the process. Hard to imagine in July that, where we would have ended up on all this, but I think, um, we wouldn't have been here without everybody's participation going above and beyond. So thank you, and that's pretty much all I have on this particular topic.
That's the real Christmas spirit, Mr. Bauderman. Well done. Man. All right, Commissioner Smith.
Thank you. Now, if there are any, um, situations where there are illegal grows out there, we really can't take action on those until this becomes part of our ordinances, correct?
If, if there was direction from the board, we could make amendments. There is still the possibility to make amendments. And what that would look like is, um, uh, probably bringing Jennifer up here, opening up, uh, what we've done so far and just making those changes, uh, kind of on the fly.
Well, that's not my question. We, we can't enforce this until it becomes law.
Ah, ah, I see what you're saying.
That's what I mean.
Yeah. No, that, that's correct. And, and as you know, medical marijuana is, is authorized under state law right now. Recreational is not.
Yes. So, um, even though we've had a lot of complaints on medical marijuana, they're doing this or this or that, our hands are tied somewhat on the medical marijuana, but they still have to abide by the law.
That's correct.
Yes. And there may be some bad actors out there. Um, and, um, I think maybe we're one of the few counties in Oregon that have actually done what we've done here, realizing there could be some changes coming forth. I think this board is flexible on making some changes. There could be some changes in the Oregon Legislature in February. There could be some changes at the OLCC, more rulemaking coming down. So we'll have to see how that ferrets out and, uh, see how well this is working or see how well it's not working. And I think we can be flexible on those items. Thank you.
Commissioner Bernard.
So, one comment was made about private access roads, and we hear quite a bit about this, uh, and, and one of the things that I tried to do when I did, when we worked on this, was to make sure it's fair. And if, uh, if a business is down the road, you have to notify your neighbors that you have a business down the road. Other, uh, and it should be no different for marijuana. And I think it's also fair to tell your neighbors that you're selling marijuana so that they would, you know, feel safe, uh, or provide some security for themselves. Uh, you know, I remember years ago, uh, somebody complained about a drug deal taking place across from a business every day. And it turns out, it wasn't a drug deal at all. It was a disabled man borrowing a cigarette from everybody every day. But people were complaining, calling the police, and, uh, watching this guy every day, and that's all it was. So I think it's fair. It's fair to let your neighbors know that you're doing that and that they, uh, you, they're, uh, providing opportunity to say no. I think adequate law enforcement's going to be a tough one. You know, one thing we're doing, uh, right now, and I'm sorry to bring this up, Paul, uh, dog barking may be, uh, important, may have been important at one point, and it might still be. But we better be funding adequate enforcement. We've got, uh, people who need to be trained and out there to make sure that illegal activities aren't taking place. And it's not, it's not necessarily a safe environment. Uh, you know, one comment, we did not open the door to retail marijuana. The voters did. Believe me, none of us wanted to do this. And it was, it was, uh, a very tough issue, and we spent a lot of time working on it. And, you know, it's just like the villages at Mount Hood. I knew that audience was set up with marijuana people, supporters, but I didn't go there with that in mind. I went there in fairness. You know, it's also not fair to require people in the urban communities to take on the burden of, of the rural communities. It should be a balanced effort. And I think that does balance it. Those people shouldn't have to, medical marijuana or recreational shouldn't have to drive all the way to Portland, try, driving tonight. And, uh, and my fear is that, you know, those people drive down from the mount, mountains and they will, uh, uh, use marijuana, then drive back. It's much safer just to have it up there closer to their locality. And, uh, you know, this is a tough one, but I think we really worked hard to make it fair, and there will be some changes. But I also wanted to mention one thing I forgot, considering it was big for me at, in the beginning, but we got, got buried in it, and that's fencing. I don't want our rural communities to look like prison camps either. And OLCC has some rules on fencing heights. And, uh, and I want to get back to that. I know we don't want to do that tonight because that would require maybe some major amendments. But no bob wire, razor wire on the top. I don't want it to look like a prison camp out there. So I hope we'll get back to that, and I just want to put on the record that we got to look at that issue.
Commissioner Schrader.
I'm just, I have a technical question. So assuming we move for, forward with this tonight, and as we continue to see changes potentially, I think I'm repeating what actually what Commissioner Smith alluded to, changes at the state level, OLCC rules, and ourselves, as we see how this plays out in our rural communities, we have a process that can come back and amend this at any time. Can we, for the public, just mention what that process is?
Sure. Yeah. Procedurally, it's not unlike what we went through to adopt this package. Now, I, I don't anticipate that would generate the amount of interest that, that this initial package did. Um, and we probably wouldn't need to send out the 50-some-thousand property tax notifications that we had to, um, with this round of amendments. But essentially, it's a, uh, it's a text amendment that would go before the Planning Commission, receive, uh, and then come before the board upon Planning Commission recommendation. And so you'd be, uh, adopting an ordinance, much like you are tonight, to implement those changes. And I, I would anticipate that in the future, just based on, uh, what we learn from this experience, uh, specifically, we've talked about fees and whether fees may need to be adjusted in the future. That needs to be done by ordinance as well. And any changes to OLCC rules, they're already, uh, commenting on some changes that are necessary. Oregon Health Authority has not finalized their rulemaking yet, and so there may be some changes coming from that. And so I, I would expect here in the future that, that an amendment package would be coming at some point.
Go ahead.
Follow-up. Um, my, my concern is that, um, we, we don't know what the unintended consequences of this is going to be yet. This is new territory. So I just wanted to clarify, because it's new territory, we don't know what those unintended consequences are yet, or if we will have them, or will have lots of them. I don't know. I just wanted to make sure that, um, our citizens are aware that, uh, from my perspective, this is highly likely, this is not going to be the last time we're going to have to address this. We don't know what the behaviors are going to be. We don't know what the actual, we can speculate as to what the actual impacts are, um, but until we actually see what evolves out there, um, I think we, I think we have to have an option open again to come back and relook and change and modify. And I want to make it clear that that's, certainly from my perspective, that would be one of my intentions.
Commissioner Savis.
Well, Nate, you did a great job of just, uh, pulling out, um, the working relationship with everyone here. And I just want to just capitalize on that opportunity. I thought staff did an outstanding job. I thought the demeanor and the delivery, the consideration, um, you guys put a lot of work in that, and I was, I was so impressed, really, with all the work that everyone did. See some staff in the audience as well that were definitely part of that. Um, and I thought your ability to answer the questions and, um, uh, staff, all staff included, and the Planning Commission's work, everyone that was involved in that did great work, so. And though I may be in a different position on a few things on the, as far as, on the commission here than my colleagues, um, that should not at all reflect on the good work that you all did. So I just want to make that perfectly clear. And it's, and frankly, I think the situation we're in here is really not a fault of anyone in this room, frankly. I think we had a, um, we had a measure that was put on the ballot, um, that, um, that in the process of House Bill 3400 changed the whole nature of it when it declared marijuana crop, and that's not what the voters had voted on. And I think that created a whole different dynamic where now, by virtue of these ever-changing rules, which have just come out in the last few, couple of months here with the OLCC and now the Oregon Health Authority, um, that are changing the nature of these activities that grow, on the grow side, to where they're really commercial in nature. And they have a very commercial, industrial type of, of an activity that are now, because of declaring it a crop, are now happening in rural residential farming communities and in EFU lands. That's not what the voters anticipated. And I think that's what, I think a lot of us are all trying to wrangle with. My, all my colleagues to my right are trying to wrangle with that one way or another. And I think that is, that is not, again, not a fault of anyone in the room. And for all the taxpayers in this county, is that the financial, the, this was sold on the, on the premise that we're going to get all this income to the state and local counties and, and local jurisdictions to help with some of the needs in the county, in the cities, and, and the state. And that's, at least on our side, from the forecast we've seen, is woefully short, woefully short of any revenue projections. As a matter of fact, it's going to cost us money. And that's the part I really struggle with. So, um, if you hear some resistance and consternation from me, that's what, that's where it is embedded, is embedded in the fact that it costs money. When it, when we was sold, that it was not cost us money, it would be a revenue generator. It was not going to be an invasion in our rural, in our residential communities, that being rural. It was not going to be an invasion on our quality of life, and that's really what's taking place here. And that, that to me is the upset.
You remember how, yes, Martha.
I just want to mention, I understand what you're saying, Commissioner, and that's why, um, I would put that under the umbrella of unintended consequences, and I think that's what we're trying to figure out, so.
Well, I'd, I'd ask for clarifying questions of the presenter, and Mr. Bauderman instead received testimony from the majority of the commission. So we'll actually get to a motion here. We'll, they'll have an opportunity yet again to tell them, you, their opinion. So how about a motion?
I move, we read ZDO 254 by title only.
Second.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Bernard. Um, I, looking at this again, and second by Commissioner Smith. So I got my, oh, yes. Okay. Now, discussion. All right, I'll ask the clerk to call the poll.
Commissioner Bernard.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Chair Ludlow.
Aye, passes 5-0. I'll ask the clerk to read ZDO 254 by title only.
Okay. Ordinance number ZDO 254, and ordinance amending sections 106, 202, 315, 316, 317, 401, 406, 407, 510, 511, 512, 513, 601, 602, 604, 822, and 1307, and repealing section 801 of the Clackamas County Zoning and Development Ordinance, and adding a new section 841 to the Clackamas County Zoning and Development Ordinance.
Thank you. I'll ask for a motion to adopt ZDO 254.
I move, we approve ZDO 254, amendments to the zoning and development ordinance for marijuana land use regulations, as previously approved at the December 2nd, 2015 land use hearing.
Second.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Bernard. Now, further discussion. Kind of worry yourself out, huh?
Pretty much.
Well, this has been an arduous journey, and I, and the accolades have been passed around. But I, I want to say how proud I am of this commission and how they've dealt with this from the beginning. It's been a long, arduous process. It's been full of controversy and accusations. And I say again, you know, there are some bad actors out there, and I can count at least three right now. And right now, uh, I have, I have asked for stepped-up enforcement and some solid reasonings behind why some of these people still can exist. And I could name one that was mentioned tonight specifically. Um, you know, with this whole thing, through the state comes some grandfathering, this and that. But these three particular ones have been really the cause of a great problem with this commission, and I think the residents, the neighbors too. It's time we stepped up the enforcement to make sure they cross the Ts and dot the Is and be relentless about that. I appreciate the concern about enforcement and how much money we'll have to do that. But I have no problems with making this a priority until we straighten out some of the bad actors, again, that we have out there and try to, uh, fathom how we can go forward. We'll certainly be reviewing this every year. Uh, we'll, we'll tweak it here and there. Commissioner Bernard has mentioned the fencing. We, he and I talked about it beforehand. I don't know how we missed it, but we'll definitely approach that early in January because we don't want it looking like fortresses out there. Are we ready for the question on this?
Yep.
All right. Mary.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard.
Aye.
Chair Ludlow.
Aye, passes four to one. And now, Mr. Crepp.
Yes, Mr. Chair. We do have, uh, two public hearings this evening. The first involves the second reading of ordinance number nine, 2015, which would repeal the moratorium on medical marijuana dispensaries and repeal the facility regulations pertaining to medical marijuana facilities and, uh, declare an emergency in so doing. And I'll ask Mr. Nate Bauderman to give you a report on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Nate Bauderman, Assistant County Council here again. Uh, I have for you now, second reading of an ordinance repealing chapters 6.12 and 8.09 of the county code. Staff is specifically requesting that you consider this ordinance for a number of reasons. First, chapter 8.09 contains the regulations currently related to medical marijuana dispensaries in the county. And given that you just approved ZDO 254, which is the comprehensive amendment package related to marijuana, repeal of chapter 8.09 will avoid conflicts and duplications of many of those provisions across sections of the county code. A number of the substantive provisions that are currently found in 8.09 of the Clackamas County Code will now be relocated into chapter 841 of the zoning and development ordinance as part of ZDO 254. ZDO 254 also contains certain changes to standards that are currently in place in chapter 8.09 as a result of new state law requirements and those adopted specifically as part of ZDO 254. The proposed repeal would also remove chapter 6.12 from the county code. The authority to impose a moratorium on medical marijuana facilities expired last May 2015. Therefore, repealing chapter 6.12 will eliminate a section of the code that is no longer operative. Due to the approval of ZDO 254 and the elimination of the moratorium provisions that are no longer effective, staff would characterize this ordinance more as a housekeeping amendment. Uh, there is an emergency clause as part of this ordinance, the purpose of which is to sync up the effective dates with ZDO 254. And it's Saff's recommendation that you read the proposed ordinance by title only and proceed to adoption. Be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Clarifying question is, so these two will coincide, so there's no loft time in between, correct?
Yeah, that, that's correct. So the effective date, even though it's an emergency ordinance, which typically is effective immediately, this one is specifically effective January 4th.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, any further clarifying questions? All right. Uh, I'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to speak on the repealing of this ordinance. All right, close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I move, we read the ordinance by title only.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bernard, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Further discussion? All right, Mary.
Commissioner Schrader.[1770.11]
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye, passes five zero. I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance by title only.
Okay, this is ordinance number 09215, 2015, and ordinance repealing chapter 6.12, medical marijuana facility moratorium, and 8.09, medical marijuana facility of Clackamas County code, and declaring an emergency.
All right, I'll ask for a motion.
I move, we adopt ordinance number 09-2015, repealing the moratorium on medical marijuana dispensaries, chapter 6.12 of the county code, and repealing medical marijuana facility regulations, chapter 8.09 of the Clackamas County code, and declaring an emergency.
Second.
All right, motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Bernard. I want people to know that regardless of when this takes effect and when 254 takes effect, we still have lots of nuisance ordinances that we could apply these to. So I say again, we're going to get a little aggressive, because you know, typically when there's legislative matters, not dissimilar to the lavender farms, you know, we wait to see what the legislative actions may be, whether they're in the state of Oregon or us, and it kind of give people a little bit of leeway. But that leeway, as far as I'm concerned, I think by the majority of this commission, has ended. Commissioner Savis?
Well, I just want to acknowledge staff's good work on, on this, on what we had actually approved earlier, which we're now repealing. And so, you know, I thought we were actually very considerate of our limited amount of resources with law enforcement outside the UGB. And this, I think the ordinance that we are repealing basically speaks to that, that issue. And now we're changing that and expanding it outside the UGB. And I think again, that's going to put greater stress and greater cost on our, on our staff and our limited resources. And I will not be supporting this for those reasons. And I'll, I'll just leave it at that.
Further discussion, Commissioners? All right, Mary?
Commissioner Savis?
No.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye, passes four to one. Mr. Krupp?
Okay, the second public hearing of the evening involves the first reading and adoption of an ordinance that would amend chapter 9.01 relating to the Uniform Code for the Abatement of Dangerous Buildings. And Mr. Nate Boderman is here to talk with you about this item as well.
Thank you. Nate Boderman, Assistant County Counsel. At this point, it should be clear who drew the short straw in council's office. What I have for you is first reading and proposed adoption of an ordinance amending chapter 9.01 of the county code. This chapter relates to the abatement of dangerous buildings. Recently, the board has been engaged in conversations related to nuisance houses within the county and the impacts that those have on the community and the challenges associated with resolving those issues. In assessing the county's ability to respond to issues related to these nuisance houses, it was determined that the authority already in place through the rules related to dangerous buildings is one of the most effective and efficient tools that we have at our disposal to potentially resolve these otherwise time-consuming and challenging issues. It was further determined that updates to the dangerous building rules would be beneficial to streamline the process and further define the situations under which a building official can order a dangerous building to be vacated. I know that in conversations with Scott Caulfield, our building official, and Scott Seco, Assistant County Counsel, the amendment for you today is only part of the larger conversation on the topic. And I'd anticipate that there'd be further updates for you on other aspects of the dangerous building and nuisance house issue. But for our purposes this evening, we're only dealing with the code amendment piece. And the proposed changes have been summarized in the staff report materials in front of you and a red line draft copy provided for your convenience to show those proposed changes to chapter 9.01. Again, many of these changes directly affect the building official and are administrative in nature, providing a more streamlined process and more defined circumstances under which the building official can order that a dangerous building be vacated. There is an emergency clause attached to this ordinance that would make these changes effective immediately. It's staff's recommendation that the board conduct a single reading and then approve the ordinance amending the rules related to the abatement of dangerous buildings. There is the possibility that, as you know, there's typically ordinances are adopted at the first reading and then a second reading 13 days later, you are able to adopt an ordinance in one reading if there is a unanimous vote to do so. The caveat with that is that the entire ordinance must be read. I don't believe it is a long ordinance, but that is one consideration. So with that, happy to answer any questions you might have on this particular topic.
Commissioners, any questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. So this is part of the effort on the nuisance homes, our efforts to rectify that and streamline our processes to moving on the abatement of those properties.
That's, that's exactly right.
I'll also note that this was brought through the County Code Update Committee, which Mr. Magcor initiated a couple of years ago to review all portions of the county code to make sure that we were up to date. And so this has been reviewed by several members of county council's office and some county administration officials as well.
I just want to point out and just acknowledge a few people that were part of bringing this forward in a sense, on the ground with some innovative work, police work by the few sheriff's deputies, that being Deputy Karen Moss, Deputy Joel Manley, and Mark Nicolai. They did some great work in our community in exercising that, that law, now getting our staff to streamline that even better to make that effect. And also with the assistance of Bill Stewart, our Assistant District Attorney, did some great work. And we've got, I think two houses right now have been rectified, remedied for now, and with more on the list. So I want to just acknowledge them for their great work on this and bringing this forward.
All right, I'm going to open the public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to speak on this matter. All right, I'll close the public hearing and ask for the motion.
I move, we read the ordinance in full.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Bernard, second by Commissioner Savis. Any further discussion on that? All right, Mary?
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye, passes five zero. I'll ask the clerk to assign a number and read the ordinance in full.
Okay, this is ordinance number 11-2015, and ordinance amending chapter 9.01 Uniform Code of the Abatement of Dangerous Buildings of the Clackamas County Code and Declaring an Emergency. Whereas in recent months, an increasing amount of attention has been brought to nuisance houses and dangerous buildings within the county. And whereas, the county's dangerous building code is one tool that is providing to be effective and efficient for dealing with nuisance houses and pose an immediate risk to the health and safety of the occupants and the public. And whereas, the Board of County Commissioners find it, find, finds in it in the best interest of the county to amend chapter 9.01 effective immediately to ensure that dangerous buildings can be dealt with in a fair and efficient manner. Now therefore, the Board of County, the Board of Commissioners of Clackamas County ordains as follows. Section 1, Chapter 9.01 Uniform Code of Abate, for the Abatement of Dangerous Buildings is hereby amended as shown on Exhibit A to this ordinance. And Section 2, Emergency Clause, the Board of Commissioners hereby finds and declares that an emergency exists inasmuch as the immediate effect of this ordinance is necessary for the peace, health, and welfare of the residents of the county. Accordingly, this ordinance shall be effective upon its adoption, adopted the 17th day of December 2015, Board of County Commissioners.
All right, a motion please.
I move, we adopt ordinance number 11-2015, ordinance amending chapter 9.01 Uniform Code for the Abatement of Dangerous Buildings of the Clackamas County Code and Declaring an Emergency.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Savis, second by Commissioner Schrader. Further discussion? Well, there has been identified in the 99 corridor, McLaughlin corridor, 25 of these houses on both sides. So you think in the county, how many more are there? This ordinance will allow for a more streamlined approach to this, because the neighbors have to suffer. We saw pictures of mounds, I mean literally dumpsters full of garbage, where there were huge rats. And that's not good for a community. So this will allow us, sometimes, to go in and clean that up. Now, that costs money. So I intend to make sure that in our next budgetary consideration is some seed money to help clean up these places quicker than they normally would be, certainly to board them up as necessary. Because right now, that, those kind of monies are pretty, pretty sparse. But in order to control that in neighborhoods, because it drastically affects their property value when there's rats and garbage and no running water, and people are living in there, no electricity that they're living in there. And some, sometimes the whole problem is people crash the party. They literally go into vacant houses and start living there. And it's tough to find the chain of title, because a lot of times it's in foreclosure, and the bank doesn't even own the place yet, so we can't point the finger at them. And it's kind of in this limbo for too many months, and that's when this stuff continues to accumulate. So Commissioner Bernard?
My question was, we could still put this, the cost of that cleanup, I forget what that's called, on, on the...
A lien?
A lien on the property, collect what it sells. But that's the issue. We don't know what it's going to sell. But I, I agree with you. We need some, we need some seed money to make this occur. And you know, if there's any opportunity, you know, I don't know if, at some point, we become the owners, and it's a huge process. And it'd be interesting to see how that, if that will occur in any of these 25 cases. You know, for, because nobody owns it, they're not paying taxes. And that means that we each year get greater ownership of that property until those taxes are abated, right?
Yep. Commissioner Savis?
I could be wrong, but I, I thought what I had heard from staff that were handling those property acquisitions or liens, that, that there was not really a revenue issue for their department as far as that. Because they, they were made whole when the property sold.
Taxes are, yeah.
So I, I thought that they had the revenue or the, the resources to handle that financially. That was my understanding.
No.
No, the, the taxes are always paid back, because they're, they're a serious lien. Whoever buys it, the lender, whoever, they have to pay. But there's no, usually when we lien the property in these kind of situations, you got to think of the statutory, the way it goes. The first mortgage holder is the one first in line, and they get their money. Then there's sometimes even a second mortgage holder, and they're in line. Sometimes there's enough, enough money to pay the second, sometimes not. But then as liens are added along there, there's only a certain amount of money to distribute it at the end. And unfortunately, a lot of those liens that we attach during this process maybe just cost aside, so they can clear the title. So there is, we get our tax money back, but that doesn't necessarily pay for boarding it up or hauling away the garbage. All right, further discussion on this, this item. All right, Mary?
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye, passes five zero. And now we have a board discussion item. Thank you very much, Mr. Boderman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to invite Mr. Greg Geist up to the dais. He's the Director of Water Environment Services. We actually have two discussion items this evening, and Mr. Geist will present these together. However, the board in taking action on them will first be acting as the Board of Directors of the Clackamas County Service District Number One, and then on the second item be acting as the Tri-City Service District. So, Mr. Geist?
Yeah, pull a little closer. Push the button. Oh, it wasn't on. All right. Good evening Commissioners. My name is Greg Geist. I'm the Director of Water Environment Services. And tonight, I'm here to talk to you about a serious capacity issue that we have with our digesters at our Tri-City wastewater treatment plant and present to you the agreement in front of you that is going to send us on a clear path to solving that problem. Before we do that though, we have a little video to show you. You may be aware, there's a little movie called Star Wars that's... I guess we're starting.
Are you ready to start yet, Greg?
Not quite.
Sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to make a little joke. Star Wars is coming out tonight, and so this is our, our premiere of this video, and I hope you enjoy it.
Now can I go?
Yes.
At Water Environment Services, we are committed to protecting what is important to you, your family's health, and the environment. We're the Clackamas County Department that provides sewer services 24 hours a day, 365 days a year to residential and business customers. Our dedicated staff uses dependable, cost-effective technology to treat wastewater and preserve the high quality of life our customers are used to.
Love it. He's been born and raised here, and I grew up just right across the river, and I love it here. He loves to fish. He'll go fishing around Clackamas Park, bring the boys. We want to make sure where we take our family and where we choose to spend our time is clean and safe.
Oregonians value their environment, right? I think most people can see a direct connection between the water they use and the water that goes back down the drain and where that goes, right? It's not like it all goes into a magic pit somewhere and we don't have to worry about it anymore.
After 30 years of high-quality service, critical infrastructure upgrades are needed to meet the demands of a population that has doubled during that time. The upgrade will increase our ability to treat solids, which are a byproduct of sewage from homes and businesses. The solids handling process depends on large systems called digesters, which help clean wastewater before it's released into the river. The digesters are quickly running out of capacity, and if they fail, untreated wastewater could end up in the river.
We discharge into the Willamette River, both from the Tri-Cities facility and the Kellogg facility. So the risk to the environment and people recreating on the river could be immediate if we have a catastrophic failure of our digesters.
We are actively working with cities to solve the capacity shortage, which affects 150,000 customers in two districts. The Tri-City Service District that treats wastewater from three cities, and Clackamas County Service District One, which serves multiple service areas in North Clackamas County. Together, the districts clean more than 6 billion gallons of wastewater every year. For years, the two districts have partnered to share facilities, equipment, and resources to provide the highest quality of service while maintaining low rates. This partnership can help solve the capacity shortage by supporting a solution that will save the most money for ratepayers, building additional capacity which both districts can share. This co-investment strategy would save millions of dollars and be paid for based on the demands of each district.
Alone, each of our municipalities can't afford to do major infrastructure on our own. By spreading that burden, right, and the benefits of use across the region, we make sure that this is not just hitting any one particular household too heavily, but recognizing instead that, you know, our plants serve entire regions. It makes sense to invest in them as regions.
You need to be able to meet the needs of the residents you serve. And if those are increasing, of course, your capacity needs to increase as well. It's just logical, it just makes sense.
At West, the customers and the communities that we serve are vitally important to us. We need to be open, we need to be collaborative, and we need to listen to what our customers are telling us. Future of West depends on our customers not only understanding, but supporting the work that we do.
To learn more about our services or to get updates on the solids handling capacity project and how you can get involved, visit clackamas.us/west.
Well, what you didn't see was the credits at the end of that. And I just want to make sure that we call attention to the fabulous work that was done by Public and Government Affairs staff as well as West staff. They just did a bang-up job on that. That's the video. We're going to be posting that, I believe, on Monday on our YouTube channel. And we'll be using that to get our message out to our customers, our ratepayers, interested people. Any questions so far?
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask for. Commissioners, any questions, clarifying questions? All right, I'll ask for the motion.
I move...
I, well, I think we're off step here. Did we ever, did we ever do the first part, which was announced the board will recess?
That's a darn good point. Now the board recesses, the Board of County Commissioners convene as Service District Number One for the first item. Well, sometimes that's good enough, sometimes that's not good enough for some people. So now, I'll entertain a motion.
I move, the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners, acting as a governing body of Clackamas County Service District One, authorize Phase One of an Agreement for Professional Engineering Services with MWH Americans, Inc., for the Tri-City Water Pollution Control Plant Solids Handling Improvements Project.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Schrader. Commissioner Bernard?
I just want to say that this is really important, and this will determine Clackamas County's future. And we need to be ready for future growth. And this is an important step. And I appreciate the effort staff has made to educate us of the importance of this decision. And I look forward to, you know, supporting this motion.
Commissioner Savis?
I just want to, just bring the attention that this first phase, or first scope of work here is basically to study all alternatives, look for the lowest cost processes, and, and get a more accurate number on the, on the cost, or perhaps cost sharing. It'll do some analysis of the needs of the two districts. So we'll be able to answer some questions that have been asked by a number of folks with a lot more accuracy. Greg, is there anything you would add to that?
Right, I would just say, so the scope of work is very logical, stepwise process. We're going to start with doing a population study of both districts, as well as the communities within those districts. That's going to tell us what our future capacity needs are that we need to build to. Then we're going to calculate what those loads are. We're going to consider the... to consider the alternative technologies, figure out what is the most cost-efficient way to, to handle the capacity. And then we're going to design it and we're going to cost it. So we're going to come out the other end of this with what we're going to build and a much better idea of what it's going to cost.
Commissioner Bernard.
So I don't know that this has anything to do with this process, but you know, while we're laying those pipes, are we going to look at purple pipes or whatever color they are? You know, for future opportunities to dispose of some of that wastewater?
Well, that, that's not related to this project, but we actually have, in, in discussions with one of the regional water providers, they're doing a master planning effort and we offered to partner with them because they're currently putting in purple pipe. We have the ability to, to deliver water to that purple pipe. We need to figure out how to connect the dots.
Thank you. Why don't you explain to the public what a purple pipe is?
Oh, purple pipe is a water reuse. So we make an effluent quality that's good enough for the state to allow different uses for that, typically irrigation, use it to flush toilets, things like that. So we can recycle that high-quality effluent that we produce. We just need a place to send it.
On the critical path that it will take to bring a new, two new digesters is what we're thinking, online, how long will that take from today?
Well, if we would come back to you in July with a conceptual plan and a budget and then we would enter the phase of, of bringing them on to fully design the thing and do the constructing, the construction bid process, it would be in 2019 likely before we would actually bring the capacity on.
Four years.
Yes.
And the, I think you told me at one time that we have, have approximately the equivalency of 4,000 units that we can hook up to the system now. How many did we use last year?
About 1,000. And, and I, I...
Probably the same.
This year we're on track for about 800, but that's, that's a projection. We're halfway through the year and I think we're, we're around 500 already. I do have to say that that's a, this is a biological process, the solids handling process. And so we do have a, we calculated a, a, a loading that 42,000, what we call EDUs, units for, and, and a year ago we were at 38,000. We are constantly looking at that number and part of the MWH scope, if you read it carefully, it's not just to calculate future capacity and loading, but to verify our current capacity and loading. It's, it's not, I, I wish it was a, a very crisp number and process, it just isn't. It's a biological process and we're running it very much past the red line.
Yeah, it's important to note that, you know, when you design one of these, it's not like we can, for example, if we notice that there is a severe spike, we can handle that right now. But we're trying to project towards the future to make sure that there isn't what we call a moratorium out there. That would be very bad for this county. If we got to the point where we have to turn away applicants to hook up to the sewer, that means our project is not going to come here and/or be built and/or be opened. So that's an important consideration. Commissioner Savis.
Just want to just add that, that as Greg was kind of alluding to, that that's, that was a, you know, best-case optimistic estimate of what the capacity is. And, and right now we're, they're trying to firm that number up and with this, with this contract, we'll get even a better number yet. And, but I do want to point out that, you know, I want to thank the efforts of all the regional members of all the cities who've played a role in this. And it's been, it's been difficult. We have a lot of new elected officials that are trying to learn what all our challenges are. And I just want to give my gratitude to them and others that have played a role in this. And staff's been under a lot of pressure and we've all been under some scrutiny because of so many questions. But this will help answer a lot of those questions. So I have a lot of confidence in that. And, and the shame of this is, is that the, we wouldn't be in this situation had we actually applied a utility rule of thumb that basically at 80, when you reach 80% of capacity, you start to plan and build your next, your next phase of capacity. And that was probably, how many years ago, Greg?
I haven't looked at how many years ago it, it was, but it was some time ago.
But this action should have taken place years ago or we wouldn't be in this, in this tight timeframe.
Right.
Further discussion? All right, Mary?
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Chair Ledlow?
Aye, passes five zero. Announce that the board will adjourn as a Service District Number One, convene as a Tri-City Service District for the next item.
So the next item is identical to the item you just acted on. I don't know that we have additional information to provide to you, but...
Great report, Greg. That was fantastic.
I, I guess I would point out, you, you may have questioned what the, the cost split between the districts was. We came up with 63% of the cost will be allocated to CCSD Number One and 37% allocated to Tri-City Service District.
That's a new number. I hadn't heard that before.
Well, it, it goes back to a 2012, or 2011 population study that Portland State University did, that we're now updating with this effort. But what they found was that overall growth over the next 20 years in both districts, when you look at that, 67% of that growth is going to be happening in Service District Number One and 37% of that growth is going to be happening in, in the Tri-City Service District. So we've just, we thought it was a fair rule of thumb so far moving forward to allocate costs of the planning for this proportionate to their future use. Now, ultimately, how we pay for this, we're working with the Regional Wastewater Treatment Capacity Advisory Committee to get, you know, some plan for that, that may or may not follow that proportionality that we're using today.
Yeah, and even that number is an estimate as well at this point.
Yes, yeah.
Right. I was talking to the mayor of Happy Valley a couple of weeks ago and she said that there's just two things that they'd applied for, somebody had applied for in Happy Valley. A subdivision of 600 and a subdivision of 1,200. So there's some big growth happening in that way. I can see why that, that figure is so high with CCSD One. Commissioner Savis.
I move, we, the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners, acting as the governing body of Clackamas County Tri-City Service District, authorize Phase One of an Agreement for Professional Engineering Services with MWH Americans, Inc., for the Tri-City Water Pollution Control Plant Solids Handling Improvements Project.
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Savis, second by Commissioner Schrader. Further discussion? All right, Mary?
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Chair Ledlow?
Aye, passes five zero. Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
The board will adjourn as a Tri-City Service District and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners for the remainder of the meeting. I'll ask the clerk to read the consent agenda by title.
Okay, the consent agenda. Under Health, Housing and Human Services, approval of revenue agreement with Oregon Department of Education for Medicaid reimbursement, approval of professional services agreement with Estacada School District for the school-based health centers building, mental health capacity, approval of Amendment 33 to the services contract with Health Share of Oregon to expand the Healthy Homes Intervention Home Visit Program, approval of a construction agreement, change order between the Department of Health, Housing and Human Services and ParTech Construction for the Westland Senior Center Expansion Project, under the Department of Transportation and Development, approval of Amendment Number One to an intergovernmental agreement, TGM Grant Agreement Number 30687, with Oregon Department of Transportation to develop the Villages at Mount Hood Pedestrian and Bikeway Implementation Plan, under elected officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes, under the Department of Communications, CCOM, approval of an amendment to the intergovernmental agreement with Washington County Consolidated Communications Agency and with the City of Lake Oswego Communications Agency for the Computer-Aided Dispatch Partnership. And under our Public and Government Affairs, a board order in the matter of an extension of the cable television franchise with Canbee Telephone Association, DBA Canbee Telecom. And that concludes the last consent agenda of 2015.
Well said. Commissioners want to remove any of those items or discuss them?
No.
All right, ask for the motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Schrader. Further discussion? All right, Mary?
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Chair Ledlow?
Aye, passes four zero. Commissioner Bernard was excused. He's, went through a recent procedure. All right, now we're down to the most exciting part of the agenda. That's right, folks. It's the county administrator update.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. I was thinking I might start off by singing a few Christmas carols.
Yeah, no.
Actually, I've got some news worth singing about. Yeah, as you recall, a couple of weeks ago, we had some graduates of our Citizen Academy program stop by to talk about how much they valued their opportunity and experience to participate in the program. This is a, an initiative of the county that gives citizens the opportunity to learn about the inner workings of county government. And our Public and Governmental Affairs Department recently conducted a survey of our first graduates to try to get suggestions and feedback. And we got some really nice comments from folks I'd like to share. One was, "I had no idea that transportation and development covered so many areas." And another, "The striking part of the session was hearing each of the Water Environment Services staff speak and really feeling their passion and dedication for their jobs." That was powerful. Some very nice comments we received. So the, the academy is accomplishing the goal that we envisioned when we set it out to give county residents an opportunity to learn more about their county government and the many things that we are involved in and the services we provide. We are now in the middle of planning for what will be the second Citizens Academy and we will be promoting it heavily as it gets started. Anyone who's interested in being a part of it should keep an eye out on our website at www.clackamas.us in January to learn more about the program. And we'll have more to say about it after the first of the year. The, I have another note as well, and this is good news for outdoor enthusiasts looking for a little holiday gift. Until December 31st, our Parks Department is offering a $5 discount on long-term parking passes for Clackamas County parks. Our parks and facilities that require parking fees include Barton Park, the Carver Boat Ramp and Metzler Park. Interested citizens can call the Parks Department at 503-742-4414 to purchase a path, pass and then look forward to visiting all of our wonderful parks that's coming here. Then I did receive a letter from the Willamette Falls Medical Foundation thanking the county for the $3,000 community small grant that we gave the foundation. This was to support their community education fund and their fever kit project. And they are grateful for the support of the county to their foundation. And I'll just say thank you again for your continued support of the foundation. We count you as a valued member of our Providence family of donors. Your gift truly makes a difference. Now, they also include a data for our tax records, but I don't think we'll probably be using that. But a very nice note from Tiffany Gillespie, who is the Executive Director of the Providence Willamette Falls Medical Foundation. That's my report.
Thank you. Now for Commissioners' communication. We'll start with Commissioner Schrader.
Well, it's kind of late, so I'll try and be brief anyway. All of us actually attended the Oregon Leadership Summit this past Monday where we were looking at the economic state of the region. The good news is that unemployment is down throughout the region. Our unemployment is down, but we still have a lot of work to go to get it up to the pre-recession levels. So I know that I am committed to making that happen in 2016 and I'm sure that my colleagues are committed to do that as well. One of the ways to do that is to work with our workforce group, Clackamas Workforce Partnership. They came by this week and gave an update on the memorandum of agreement that we have. It's mandated by federal law that you have to have elected officials sit on the board. I've had the privilege of sitting on that board, looking at workforce issues and what does that mean? It means that we get the dollars we need to train people, to skill up, whether it be in a trade, at the community college, any kind of special needs they want, they, they may have. If they're dislocated workers, if they've lost a job, they help with additional training and skilling up and job placement. So it's a great group of people. It is primarily made up of business people. That is also federally mandated. And I'm happy to say, I guess, the omnibus bill just passed Congress and one of the things that happened was maintaining the level of federal dollars that will come directly into our state workforce system and to our workforce board so we can have the funding we can do to continue to innovate programs to make sure people have the skills necessary for a career and a job. So good work this week. As we mentioned a little earlier, we did have a Stafford Urbans Reserve discussion with our three county, excuse me, our three county mayors from the surrounding cities of Westland, Lake Oswego and Tuolatin. It did not go well with Metro. I was very disappointed and I think digging in is not going to help our cities or this county get where they, where we need to be. And I was very disappointed in their reaction. And the tone was, well, we can get it done in court. And I didn't think that was an appropriate thing to say as you entered a discussion if, if the focus was to come to an agreement together about a really difficult land use issue. And I think the inability to get over one single word in a sentence about whether an area was a conditional urban reserve and what that meant, I think we could have gotten there. So that was a disappointment for the week for me to see that happen, but we will live to fight another day. That's how I look at it. Finally, I'm just going to say Merry Christmas to everybody, Merry Christmas to our staff, Merry Christmas to all the folks in the audience. And I've said this before, I'm looking forward and, and two days my grandchildren will be spending their first American Christmas. And I think I mentioned this before, but I bought the peppermint teddy bear tree from the Festival of Lies at Lake Oswego. And I'm going to take them to, I'm going to take them Sunday morning to the peppermint teddy bear play that goes on. It's just an hour long, so my little guys will be able to sit through it. And while I'm doing that, I'm going to have my younger daughter take all the teddy bears and stick them under the peppermint teddy bear tree with all the books. So that'll, it, it's going to outshine Santa Claus when I tell Jasper that, well, the peppermint teddy bear's come to visit the house. And, and they'll have that. So I'm really looking forward to that and wish all of my colleagues a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Excuse me. Yeah. Who did, yes, go ahead.
That would be me. The Willamette Falls Locks Working Group met last night to go over our final meeting of the year. Next month, we will start the State Task Force on reopening, reopening and managing the Willamette Falls Locks here in Clackamas County. And we, we will have six meetings over the year. It's a governor's appointed task force of which I will be attending and we look forward to some really good things on the locks. We've come a long way in negotiating with the Corps of Engineers in Washington, DC and here in Oregon as well. I'm going to do the dog, Mary. Okay? Yes, yes. This is Jess. She is lovely, calm lady. Her coat is easy to maintain and she is attractive to what is going on around here. Her, excuse me. She will take treats nicely and is easy to handle. She will be very excited to meet with visitors. Her holiday wish is to become a member of a loving family. For more information about Jess and other adoptable dogs, please contact Clackamas County Dog Services, 503-655-8628. And I would just like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a good New Year. This board will be on recess for a couple of weeks. I think it's well-deserved. We've done a lot of very hard work this year. We've come a very long way. And I'm very proud of my Commissioners for working together with all of us to do what's best for the citizens of the county. Merry Christmas, everybody.
Thank you. Commissioner Savis?
Yeah, I was just reckoning the, one of the public commenters tonight with regard to citizen ratepayers. I think she was, it was Thelma, she was speaking to the Citizen Ratepayer Advisory Committee and talking about citizen input. And I, I kind of came from that world and I, I believe it entirely. And, and in so many different ways, I, all the committees we have on so many things like parks and the Fair Board and, and wastewater and community planning organizations, Hamlet's Villages, land use stuff, the stuff that was talked about earlier with regards to Borland Stafford and all the hard work a lot of citizens do, we, we, they do a lot of work on our behalf. We, they do a lot of work on our behalf. And they spend hours, actually collectively, tens of thousands of hours for really the same thing Commissioner Smith just said, they're all trying to do the best for our county. We're all trying to do our best as we see, we see and feel and feel fit. And going forward, I think that when we talk about where it's wastewater, we're going to do our, I think our last year of the zoning ZDO review, there'll be a lot of, that'll be a lot of urban zoning cleanup and work, they'll be involved, have a lot of public involvement. I've received a lot of emails recently, as in my role as J-PAC, about transportation priorities, if you will. And there's a group of folks that want to see more investment on, for bike ped, and they've been very effective at sending hundreds of emails. Thank you very much. And message received. And, but as we talked about earlier, I think it's, we have so many transportation needs, and I think it's hit the critical point with congestion, as we all know and we've discussed here before. And I really think, you know, Metro will be doing, J-PAC, on behalf of J-PAC, will be doing a survey or public outreach in regard to transportation investments. And the committee has been working on some of the language or the approach on how to, how to, how to ask the question in a way that's, you know, somewhat instructive and educational. And I think, I don't know what that final product would look like, but I think we might want to entertain in Clackamas County maybe some kind of a transportation survey when it comes to transportation choices. I mean, I suppose if I was hovering above, like some of the news reporter, the traffic reporters do in helicopters, and I was hovering above the region or Clackamas County, you know, they see the traffic and report on the traffic, it's pretty interesting to see where we have congestion and where those needs are. And I don't see a lot of congested, you know, sidewalks and other activities, and I don't see a lot of congestion on a number of our transit lines, even though they serve, it's a vital need. But I think that is blatantly clear to a lot of people that are traveling, that traffic has just reached an intolerable level. And as I mentioned earlier with regards to how some of the mayors feel, whether it's Borland Stafford or it's Boring, Oregon, or it's wherever it's at, that transportation is such a key issue right now that we need to be focused, we need to show a commitment as leaders, elected leaders, that we are going to fix this problem. And I think that is the disconnect, that we have not actually agreed on what that looks like. So I'm hoping that we perhaps can entertain doing our own, should the, the public outreach done by J-PAC is inadequate to talk to or communicate with our, our citizens, that we ought to consider doing our own. The other thing in public involvement, I think, was really relevant to, especially yesterday's conversation with the cities in Borland Stafford. And that is, and I attended a number, I didn't attend all, but I attended a number of the meetings when, when we were doing that urban reserves planning. And right across the way here in DSB, and they worked in the wee hours of the night, again, our citizen volunteers doing that. But you know what was missing? I clearly can't recall. And that was, what problem are we trying to solve? The actual very question, the very fundamental question of what, what are we all there for? And we were there for because it was a requirement, we understood that, that we had to go through this process, we had to do that. But we really didn't talk about why, nor did it really come up yesterday either, or a number of these meetings, why we're doing what we're doing. We're doing it because we're a growing region, and we need to grow our jobs, and we need to grow our housing to accommodate that growth. Now that's, we can't stop growth, and they have the forecast, but I don't think it was really made clear that somehow we need to address the needs. We heard a lot about not in my backyard, and I understand that. We all want to protect and preserve our communities and our neighborhoods, and I'm all for that. However, we do need to coalesce together and figure out where and how we are going to grow. And I think that part of the discussion just wasn't there, that I witnessed. It perhaps happened, but I'll tell you, it was not, it should be repeated, it should be part of every dialogue. And I really didn't hear much of that yesterday, back then. And I think as a result, we really got a map of urban reserves designations that does not serve the needs of our county and our citizens. And I think that's, that's fundamental. And we have transportation assets like I-205 and I-5 and these highways that need to be taken advantage of, and not really be just a road going by, a unused, unused areas that have potential to grow and to kind of grow the way the community wants. So that's a mouthful. We've had a long year. I really appreciate all the citizen input. We've had a lot of tough issues. I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, best, best wishes and happy holiday season, all of that good stuff, and we look forward to a bright new year. Thank you very much.
All right, the first thing I'm going to do is, Martha gave it to me because she forgot, is tell you that there's arts and culture activities in the county. Holiday history talks, come here, how the pioneers celebrate or at least survive their first Christmas in Oregon. Enjoy warm winter beverages in the Visitor Center. December 17th through 23rd, 9:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at the end of the Oregon Trail Interpretative Center in Oregon City. The best Christmas pageant ever. The 20th time this holiday production has been staged by Lakewood Theater Company. A delightful family story about the true meaning of Christmas. Again, December 17th through 23rd, 7:30 p.m., and Saturday and Sunday, December 19th and 20th, 2:00 p.m. at the Lakewood Center for the Arts. For more information about the event, go to the Arts Alliance website, clackamasartsalliance.com. And if you have an opportunity this charitable season, make a great donation there. And don't forget that Clackamas Women's Services have as a special drive to match, I think it's $22,000. I want to go over some of the few successes of this board, very proud of the work they did this year. And this is not a complete list, but we developed the Clackamas County Core Values, called SPIRIT. And that's labeled, they've put posters all over the county on that. We worked very hard on the road ahead in educating the public as to our road situation. Performance Clackamas is alive and well and going through all of our county departments. We adopted a Second Amendment resolution. We're in, we completed year three of a five-year ZDO, or Zoning and Development Ordinance audit. The Willamette Falls Legacy Project, the River Walk is going along well, and the locks down there with help from people like Commissioner Schrader and Commissioner Smith. The, we have an independent internal auditor now we've hired. Some of us took FEMA training in Maryland this last year, to get ready for the big one, you know. And we adopted a women's pay equity resolution. Commissioner Smith brought forward the idea that we can save all of our patrons and all of our customers and taxpayers here in the county a lot of money on the prescription drugs, through the NACO Prescription Drug Program. If you want one of the cards, they're in our offices, but otherwise you can get them in a lot of places throughout Clackamas County or certainly contact our staff. We had, the Sunnyside Library is no longer ours, we transferred it to Happy Valley, it was a good day. And we celebrated the Vietnam War Memorial Wall that was, it was not a miniature one for sure, but it was a scaled-down version of the real Vietnam War Wall at Milwaukee. We got the state and the federal recognition of I-205 as a high priority corridor. This is big stuff. And if you think about that, this is not the first commission. Many before us constantly said, you've got to fix this problem. A 37-mile freeway and 5.8 miles is right here in Clackamas County, only has two lanes in each direction. Now, I want to note to you, we've done a lot of work, we feel very successful about that, and our thanks to Commissioner, to Congressman Schrader and Congressman Defazio for really putting this forward and getting it on that list. All that time that we were saying we needed that extra lane, Metro says, what? They never joined in and asked for this extra lane. Because as they've said before, why build another lane? It'll just fill up. The Family Justice Center is alive and well, doing very well, and growing like crazy, serving women who are really in peril, and seniors as well, and the children of those women. I can go through the legislative session successes, but we had quite a few. The Area Commission on Transportation, we, it was formed, and we have Commissioner Savis representing us there. We passed on, and to be on the ballot in May, what is called C-800. And what that is, is the Emergency Radio Communication System will be replaced if the voters agree. And this is a public safety issue, because these are old Motorola units that they use, and they can't even find the parts on eBay to repair them. And that may put people in peril, because this isn't just about police officers. This is fire department. This is, this is our ambulances that use the same technology, and it really needs to be enhanced and brought into the 21st century. The Clackamas County Extension Service Center will be located here on the campus. We've preliminary agreed to that, to a location across the street, and they've got quite something planned for that. And a success is certainly the work that the Stafford Reserves facilitated discussion as part of that. And, you know, again, Metro says, no, 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 and so, you know, they seem to have the hammer on us. But as necessary, we will go to the legislature to see if they can understand that we are woefully lacking in future lands, certainly to the point they're ready to lock up lands for 50 years. That's a long, long time, folks. I've been in this county for 50 years. And if somebody 50 years ago would have said, we're going to lock it up, I would have thought they were crazy and it would have never passed. But now, evidently it will. So take time out from your busy schedule and do something relaxing, take stock of what is important to you this holiday season. Remind yourself of your strengths, all you have been able to endure, and think of those who support you. So when life throws you unexpected changes, you can look after yourself and learn to be resilient. Take the time to tell somebody you appreciate them, that they've done a good job, that even that you love them, and that returns doubled up. It's like pay it forward and it'll come back for you. So take that time this holiday season, and again, let people know that they're important in your life. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your patience tonight. It's 8:21 p.m., and I hope you have a happy holiday season. There being no further business before the commission this day, this meeting is adjourned.